All right. All right, good evening, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for May 5th, 2021 to order. As we're starting Military Appreciation Month, Teacher Week, Memorial Day at the end, let's have a moment of silence for everyone that's serving our great nation. Thank you, and if Alderman Jobson would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you, Alderman Jobson. Brian Krupp, our city clerk, if you'd please call the roll. Dunn?
Here.
Doorman?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Dickman?
Here.
Jobson?
Here.
And Ambrose?
Here.
Nein?
Present, Your Honor.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening again, everyone, as we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole. I'd again like to welcome all the attendants here tonight and those who are viewing the meeting through different devices. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're also sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and, of course, viewers throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation please reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for everyone. If you have a cellphone, especially in here, if you put it on silent or turn it off, we'd appreciate it just simply so it doesn't get in the way of someone talking. If you would like to address the council on any specific item, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Please address us as one body. Certainly you'll have that opportunity at specific agenda items and then for public comment at the end. We ask you to please respect us, we'll respect you, and thank you for your attendance. All right? Ms. Spiegel, our city administrator, anything this evening?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Under that. So we'll move right along into public hearings. There are five, two in community development and three in public works. So first, community development. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case ORD 21-01, amending various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of the Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning." Before we get into the public hearing, I asked Laura from staff to come up and just give us a run-through of the zoning updates that are included in this.
Thank you. Laura Berkeley, the Development Planning Administrator. So there are several different sections that are under consideration for revisions. The first is Section 17.04.020 uses to change the language to prohibit the conversion of a single-family into two-family dwelling. The second one is Section 17.05.040, which is in the Design Standards of the Commercial section of the code, that gives the ability to allow developers to pick between the commercial design standards and the dwelling standards. Next is under Table 17.08-1, Use Matrix. There are several. First is removing special use from bars under C1, removing drive-through facility from C1 and IMU, removing dwelling-two-family conversions as a special use in all R3 and R4 districts, adding live performance venue to I1, adding outdoor dining to SIC, adding place of worship to I1 and IMU, adding private recreation facility to COP and I1, adding vehicle repair service major as a special use in C3, removing vehicle repair service minor as a special use in C1. Then in Section 17.08.030, Principal Use Standard, adding a definition for bar neighborhood under Section 17.08.050 under Use Definitions. Sorry, the last one was adding a use standard associated with bar neighborhood. 17.08.050 is adding a definition for bar neighborhood. And then finally, in Section 17.17.010, adding previously approved conditions under Ordinance 2002-177 for 5601 Eastern Avenue.
Thank you. I appreciate you doing a summary there of these changes. So with that, is there anyone from the public who is here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That public hearing has been closed. Public hearing number two is on the conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way known as part of East 11th Street between Perry and Pershing and portions of vacated public alleys located in Blocks 89 and 96 of Leclerc's Eighth Edition. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That public hearing has been closed. Back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. The next area of public hearings is under Public Works. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the downtown Davenport streetscape East Second Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Please state your name and word.
Phil Handel, Nashville, Tennessee, also a ward four. Just a very quick one. The prior hearing that we just had a minute ago, the city gave a very brief synopsis of what was included in that. This is like writing a letter to the editor, saying you want to change the letters of the editor. Maybe it would be nice if there's just a 30-second synopsis of what's involved in these so we could actually have an idea of what we're commenting on. I know the title of it is Streetscape and Second Street, but I don't know, perhaps in the future, we could maybe have something just a very brief synopsis. I know in the past, I've said I've had some issues with the street lighting that we've been most recently putting on many of our major streets, that it's much too low and too intense, and it's kind of a glary type of thing. Don't know whether that's included in this, but I think it might be helpful in the future to get a lighting engineer to maybe look at those. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Handel. Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. I open a second public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the installation of new traffic signals at the intersection of Hickory Grove Road and Central Park Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. That public hearing is closed. And I open the third public hearing on the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Hickory Grove resurfacing project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. All right, that takes care of the public hearings. Next item, we have one proclamation this evening, and I'll read it. City of Davenport, Iowa proclamation, "Whereas the City of Davenport recognizes the sacrifices and dedication of the active retired and future servicemembers of the United States military and their families, and whereas the City of Davenport and the Quad City region as a whole is home to many of these servicemembers with our close proximity to and deep appreciation of the Rock Island Arsenal and multiple military installations, and whereas these servicemembers are a critical part of our region, filling roles as coworkers, neighbors, and friends, strengthening the social fabric of this area as outstanding role models and community leaders, and whereas many servicemembers have heroically given their lives in conflict for the defense of our freedom and strength as members of the great nation, and whereas it is crucial to recognize and celebrate the veterans of these conflicts and to be aware of and responsive to their ongoing needs, both physical and emotional, and whereas civilian workers at facilities such as the Rock Island Arsenal play an important role in the support of these servicemembers, the strength of the United States and its promise of freedom and the success of the Quad City region as a whole, and now therefore we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the Davenport City Council, do hereby proclaim May 9th through 15th, 2021, as Military Appreciation Week in the City of Davenport, and ask residents to please join us in extending gratitude and appreciation to all military servicemembers and veterans for their service and sacrifice. The City of Davenport Skybridge will display the colors red, white, and blue from Monday, May 10th through Saturday, May 16th, in recognition of military servicemembers, families, and veterans, dated this 5th day of May, 2020. I move the proclamation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And Colonel Todd Allison, Garrison Commander, I'll meet you at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your service and all the servicemembers and families and members of the Rock Island Arsenal and all communities. So can you get a picture?
Thank you.
Can I get my glasses on?
Now you want to turn?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Mayor Mattson, distinguished members of the Davenport City Council, everybody viewing today, thank you so much for inviting me to represent the Rock Island Arsenal and really our entire veteran community that you mentioned. You know, only 1% of, less than 1% of our population serves in uniform and has those qualities that you described. And, but you know, Davenport and the Quad Cities community is amazing because I feel like they definitely don't represent that less than 1% because there's such a large veteran community here. And so, you know, one of the most important characteristics of the military profession is the trust that the military member, whether they're on active duty or veterans, have in our public. And there is no better way to honor someone for their service, whether it's in the past, no matter how long, than to thank them with a week like this. And so I just ask, no matter what you're doing this week to honor our veterans, just take the time out to thank them for their service because it does mean so much. And they did make that sacrifice. So thank you so much. It's been an honor and privilege to represent the community here, and again, thank you for allowing me to accept this proclamation on behalf of the veteran community.
Thank you very much, sir. All right, moving on, petitions and communications. I just have one small one. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I, just a shout-out to all teachers, you set the example for our students and your appreciation and your work, and it is, thank you very much. So I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to let everybody know in the third ward that on Monday, May 17th, we will be having a third ward meeting here in council chambers at 6:30. We will be doing it virtually as well, but we will have in-person, and I will be here in person. So if you feel comfortable coming to the chambers, too, you'll be able to watch online if not. We will be talking about the Dream Project, which has just been announced this week. It's the third go at this great program, and I hope to have also someone from the Denver Police Department just to talk about summer safety, which is something always to be thinking about as the weather warms up. That meeting will be preceded at 5:45 with a meeting for interested parties who are living or have property close to Marquette Street. We're going to be having a great part of Marquette from 9th South to resurface, being resurfaced this year, and so that'll be coming up this summer, and so this is a chance. And there will be letters going out to everyone who lives kind of in that vicinity, but anybody's welcome to come to that meeting as well. We're trying to repair really all the roads. There's going to be a huge resurfacing project of Third and Fourth Street in a couple of years, and so the feeder streets, Division was done last year, Marquette this year. Marquette's in better shape, so it probably won't be quite as dramatic as Division, but we'll still be doing that. So those things are coming up on May 17th. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderwoman McGinnis. Alderwoman Lee?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Couple of things. One is at the end of the month, on May 27th, we're going to be having the opening of the Goose Creek Golf Course with ribbon cutting and some clinics on how to actually throw them, which I am terrible at, but I try. As far as I know right now, it's going to be about 5:30. I think it depends on the mayor's schedule, and this is pretty exciting. And also, we will be getting a bathroom there sometime, I believe, this year. And tournaments are coming, so it's very exciting what's happening down at Goose Creek Park. Also, the eighth ward will be having my meeting at 6:30, May 13th. I'm still doing them virtually, but I am thinking about having them here in chambers as well, but this one will be virtual. And Nicole Gleason will be speaking about the H.R. Green Flood Study. So if you have a chance, any of those listening, to go to the city website, citiadavenportiowa.com, there is a 32-minute video which describes where we are today on the recommendations from H.R. Green for managing the nine areas on the riverfront. So that's very exciting as well. Also, don't get too complacent about COVID. It's still pretty serious out there. I've gotten my vaccinations, and it's certainly given me a lot of relief. I'm not afraid of killing somebody, and I'm not afraid of getting sick anymore, but it's still important to wear masks, and social distance is appropriate. So thank you very much. Back to you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lee. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. This morning, the city and the Davenport Police Department held a press conference for bringing to justice a person in the kidnapping and murder of Briasia, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank the Davenport Police Department and specifically the detectives who worked this case for 10 months. And we know the lengths they went, the extra hours they put in, the incredible effort to get to this point, that the justice system can now take place and there can be justice for Briasia. And I just want to make sure that we're recognizing that it was an incredible effort, that it was important to our community, and the police department, and specifically a handful of detectives did an excellent job of seeing this through, and now it's in the hands of justice. So thank you. We appreciate it.
Well said. Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Very good. Moving on. Okay, we have our four areas of discussion, action items, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee will lead the discussion. Alderman Gripp, please.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is a second consideration, ordinance for case REZ 21-01, being the request of Dan Lorenson on behalf of Rock Church Ministries, Inc., to rezone Lot 2 of NIMs Acres from SOS Open Space District to R1 Single Family Residential District. And before I ask anyone from the public to comment, I'll just take a quick point of privilege and say that I did meet with the petitioners this week and city staff to talk through some of the concerns, and we'll give them the opportunity to come up if they'd like to, but they are going to request that we table this item until the time that we've seated the seventh ward alderman, because they do need eight votes, and they're currently not represented by a ward alderman. They thought that that would be their best course of action, and I think that's a fair request, so I'll be making that request for them. And with that, is there anyone from the public who wants to comment on this item? Okay, anyone from the council? Okay, so do I need to make the motion to table now? So I make a motion to table this item until the point that we have a seventh ward alderman seated. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this item has been tabled. Item number two is a first consideration, ordinance for case ORD 21-01, amending various sections of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa, entitled "Zoning." Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? Okay, seeing no one, this item moves on as well. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the conveyance of the vacated public right-of-way known as part of East 11th Street between Perry and Pershing and portions of the vacated public alleys located in Block 89 and 96 of Leclerc's Eighth Edition. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? Anyone from the council? This item moves on. Item number four is a resolution approving a development agreement between the City of Davenport and Seafried Industrial Properties, Inc., for the development of 2.9 million-square-foot distribution center and associated infrastructure improvements. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? No one from the council? I'll just mention that this is a... Alderman Ambrose?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can we have someone from staff give a brief overview of this, what's expected in the future?
Sure. Corinne or Bruce, who would like to take that?
Bruce Berger, Community and Economic Development. Was it what's expected for the future? Is that the question?
Why don't you explain what this is and what's the possibilities down the road?
Okay, so this is a development agreement between the city and a developer for this distribution center. It just details what the city's responsibilities are and what the developer's responsibilities are, and so then down the road, that development, like some other prospects that we've had, would be able to continue out with the project. At this point, they have not committed to doing the project, so it's still in that prospect mode, so...
All right, see no one else. Obviously, this is very exciting and another big potential for the industrial center, the GDRC and the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center. We were able to retain craft up there. We were able to attract Sterilite, and now we have another big employment opportunity here. The deal hasn't been closed, obviously. It's still a prospect, but hopefully we should know all of the details within the next month or so. So very exciting stuff. And seeing no one else, I would ask Alderwoman Lee to please set the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Gripp. I move that the first item, which, well, actually the second item, for the first consideration for the ordinance changes be put on the discussion agenda to allow further discussion by the public, and that the third and fourth resolutions be placed on the consent agenda.
All right. The motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes community development this evening.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp and Alderwoman Lee. Next item area is public safety. Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman will lead that discussion. Alderman Jobson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one is third consideration ordinance amending Schedule 7 of Chapter 10.96 entitled "No Parking" by adding East 56th Street along both sides from Utica Ridge Road east to the city limits. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Next, item two, resolution approving street, lane, or public ground closures on listed dates and times to hold outdoor events. J&amp;M Displays Incorporated, fireworks after Quad City River Bandits Games, Modern Woodman Park, 209 South Gaines Street, various dates, May through September 2021. Closure, bike path behind Modern Woodman for approximately a half hour after the list of games. Anyone from public wishing to comment? Council? Next, Hope at the Brick House Neighborhood Block Party, 1431 Ripley Street, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Friday, June 11th, 2021, Friday, July 9th, 2021, and Friday, August 20th, 2021. Closure, Ripley Street from West 15th Street to West 14th Street. Anyone from public wishing to comment? Council? Then the last item, I will read the two new licenses, but I will not read the annual renewals as they are listed for your reference. The first new license, new owner, temporary permit, temporary outdoor area location for beer and liquor license applications is Hickory Creek Event Center, 3504 Hickory Grove Road, license type Class C Liquor. Anyone from public? Council? And then the other one is Iron and Grain Coffee House, Davenport, 1618 North Main Street, outdoor area, license type Beer/ Wine. Anyone from council? Or anyone from public? Council? I would ask Alderwoman Dickman to please set the agenda.
I move that all items be placed on consent.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jobson and Alderwoman Dickman. The next area is public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Doorman will lead the discussion. Alderman Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have six items this evening. Item number one is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the downtown Davenport streetscape East Second Street project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Hello there. Kyle Carter, Executive Director, Downtown Davenport Partnership, in fifth ward. Just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. This is another project that was a collaboration between the city, downtown property owners, as well as DDP as a unit, all making this possible. We've been working on this model for many years, as you know, and this is yet another project that is a direct result of that partnership, so it's awesome. I want to give a special shout-out to city staffer Jen Walker, who's just amazing, in the weeds on this stuff, and does such a good job finding every detail. We've given information out to all the property owners. They have estimates of what to expect from this. That's a result of a lot of Jen's hard work. So just wanted to give her special kudos because this stuff's super complicated, and she's a wizard at putting it together. So appreciate that, and looking forward to seeing another beautiful streetscape project done in downtown this fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Anyone else? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the installation of new traffic signals at the intersection of Hickory Grove Road and Central Park Avenue. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Hickory Grove Road resurfacing project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution awarding the contract for street resurfacing on West Lombard Street to Manats Incorporated of Eastern Iowa Division of Comanche, Iowa, in the amount of $208,642.10. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Federal Transit Administrative Administration for the FY 2020 carryover grant funding. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number six is a resolution approving an engineering contract with Shive Hattery of Moline, Illinois, in the amount of $471,900 for the street infrastructure improvements associated with the Seafried Industry Development Agreement. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Doorman, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I move to place all six items on the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, and the agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn. And the next and last area, finance. Alderman Condon will lead the discussion, and then he'll have someone set the agenda. Alderman Condon.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one, motion awarding the contract for talent development consulting services to Sixana Consulting, Inc. of San Diego, California. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Alderman Ambrose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is there someone from staff that can explain what this is, please?
Sure. As I shared with you all yesterday, as part of the city administrators' work plan and something we've talked about with succession planning and leadership development in our organization, we went out through a very competitive process, had 16 different firms apply, went through a scoring process, and ultimately came down a unanimous decision for this firm. They will specifically work with the executive team, the next layer of management, and then certain team areas within the organization.
Corey, can you briefly explain why this is important for the future of the city? Corey, can you briefly explain why this is important for the future of the city?
So I would draw your attention to last year and the fact that we, as a team, could successfully navigate critical incident after critical incident. So we want to ensure that our leadership team is well-rounded and working together well for the, the future of Davenport.
And Corey, I thank your leadership. You've done an incredible job with finding the right people. They do a great job, and yeah, I see it every day and I'm very proud of what you've done. Thanks.
Alderwoman Dickman.
Wanted to start by thanking staff for their foresight on this. You know, good, good planning makes for less cleanup later, and I think as elected officials and as citizens, we all appreciate that. I know that we're in the Midwest and that's, we don't have mountains or rivers, oh, we have the river, but we don't have the mountains or the coast to, to help draw people to the area. And so I think that a lot of the work that we've done for livability enhancements has also been a great talent enhancement. I know that we're still struggling with our diversity, and I'm hoping that, especially since this is kind of a grow your own, for lack of a better description, that this will help with that. And especially, I'm hoping that if we can kick up our recruitment and recruitment efforts for mid-level positions and then start this in this, that program, that that will help us address our disparity and reflect our community better. So thank you and notes for moving forward. Thank you.
In addition to our single item on finance, we have purchases from $10,000 to $50,000 listed for you here below on the agenda. We don't read each of those aloud, but again, they're there for your information. Alderwoman Dickman, would you please set the agenda?
I would be happy to. I would be happy to move to put one item on the consent agenda.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And that concludes finance, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Condon. Next area is, are there any ordinances, motions, or resolutions? There are none for this evening. Next area is, is there any public with business, meaning someone like to discuss something with us or provide information to us other than something on the agenda? Seeing none, okay. Is there, okay?
Bill Handel? Bill Handel? I see two now. Nashville, Tennessee, I gotta have, be quicker on the draw, sorry.
You're good. You're an expert at this.
And, yeah, Fourth Ward, just a couple of things. Thankfully, this is a quick meeting. I have to commend all the council members for the, the, the time that you spend on your Wednesday nights for the good of our city, eight o'clock meetings. Gosh. Anyway, couple of things I want to talk about, the, the small houses that were put up by the 1A Ministry, I gotta commend them for doing that, but always have some issues, but I think perhaps just like the Habitat for Humanity houses, it might be good for the city somehow to get some type of architect that's perhaps thinking about more of the, the place of those units in our, in the neighborhood. The one that I saw, I'm sure it's very good, but it's setback, it's a very kind of undistinguishable building. Perhaps if they had six units clustered in the two stories high with a porch or something, would cost necessarily any more, but it would fit in better with the neighborhood than the ones that we, we see there. But again, commend them for doing that. I was just concerned that they've got maybe a number of other blocks that they're going to put more of those same units. I don't think they're necessarily a good fit for a neighborhood under the, in the long term, for 100 years or 50 years even. Couple of the things, the Riverfront Improvement Commission, love what they do and they've done a good thing over the years, but I think attending their meetings and being generally the only person in attendance ever, I think there's not enough improvement, and I think what I'd like to see the city of Davenport do, because we're blessed with this, this great river, and it's an attraction over time. And over time, tens of thousands of people could, could move to our city because of, if we handle it right. 100 years ago, the city of San Antonio had a, a small river, it was almost like Duck Creek, that flooded its banks. They rerouted it through the downtown, but they, they kept a gateway so that there'd be a small amount of water coming in and they developed the, the Riverwalk. You know, it's a, it's a worldwide attraction to San Antonio. I looked it up, it's the annual benefit to their economy is estimated at $3.5 billion with a B. And we're not the size of San Antonio, but if it weren't for that Riverwalk, San Antonio would be a dry, dust-hot area that no one would ever visit, even though it has the Elmo. So I, I think with, let's, I think if we could keep something like that in mind, that becomes our goal, to create a, a draw that, that 100 years from now, it's something that we can look back and say, that we brought it to fruition in these years from 1920 to 19, I mean, 2020 to 2040. And I think it could have as big an impact. When I see the, I talked the other week about some type of a quotation, I've had the Maya Angelou. This is very, this is a common thing. The idea of life is short, art is long. I think it's so true. I mean, artwork spans the centuries. If you go to Venice, Piazza San Marco, artwork's all along and beauty is something that they baked into the cake right from the beginning. And I think we know the Centennial Bridge, we know the New Y74 Bridge. We need to make sure everything we do is of the highest quality, and I think in the long run, it'll pay big dividends to our city. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Ken Croken. I live in the Sixth Ward, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the River Bandits. One, one item and two updates. Nothing is more important to the River Bandits organization than the health and well-being of our community and our neighbors. To that end, we are, and I'm sure you all share our concern, that area vaccination rates for COVID-19 trail the nation and the states, both Illinois and Iowa. So to that end, the River Bandits have partnered with the Scott County Health Department and we're offering a very special vaccination clinic this Saturday morning. And I, I would ask if all of you would forward this information to your constituents. The vaccination clinic will be walk-in. We have learned that appointments are entirely too complicated for a lot of people, so it'll be walk-in, it'll be from 9:00 till noon. It will offer the Johnson &amp; Johnson Once and Done vaccine. That should make this as convenient as any clinic we've had yet. And more importantly, the, the River Bandits will provide everyone who gets their vaccination on Saturday with a voucher for a free general admission game ticket, so they can come back another day when their arm isn't sore and, and get the opportunity to watch the Bandits play, opening day, Tuesday, May 11th. Secondly, I wanted to also report to you that we had our job fair two weeks ago. We have hired close to 200 people so far. We will continue to do hiring, so if anyone was unable to get to the fair and is interested in work at the stadium, they should come by and let someone know. And finally, while it was not contained in the news release, I also wanted the council to know that the River Bandits are also offering a special $2 ticket deal to all active and retired military during Military Appreciation Week. So we're a part of that as well. And that's all I have for you, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Pausing, anyone else? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Have a great day and weekend. Thank you.